with his mustache. And so he is actually studying physics right now. And he just came back. Sorry about that. Let's see. Can we do that? Did that work? All right. Not sure how to get out of this other one. Oh, sorry about that. Did I do something here? reopen? Here, I'll let you do it. Well, my son Tanner, who studies physics, is planning to go back to school this next year. He was at University of Oregon and they shut everything down and they were quite isolated. And so that was quite a challenge for the students there. And it's something that all of our students have actually had to contend with. And then my husband, Mike, who you saw in there, is the owner and operator of our heating and air conditioning business. And I don't know necessarily that he thinks that I take care of the money well, but I can tell you I cash all the checks and I balance the books and I'm responsible for the fiscal part of the, of our business. Thank you. All right. There's our dogs, Obi and Rosie. And right here you'll see Blair, who's pregnant with those twin boys, which is probably the most exciting thing besides being on city council that's happening in my life. They are due to be here on May 16th and hopefully all goes well for them. And, and the fun part is I'm going to get to see my children in action, being parents and all the same stresses and anxieties they gave me. Now they're going to get to have those themselves. So people ask me what it's felt like to be on city council. This is a picture of what I believe it has felt like a little bit over the last couple of weeks. If you can see my face there, it's a little bit horrifying, but exactly what you would expect. Here's a close up of that same face for those who can't see it. You know, it is horrifying at times. It's a lot that I've been able to absorb as far as being on council. And I've told people that it feels very much like you're jumping on a horse as it's running because things have been moving very quickly and I'm very committed to not showing, slowing down that progress that city council has been working on so diligently. And I think that they found a good fit with me as far as making sure that I understand how governance works. So we'll get rid of the ugliest picture that, of me that survived on my husband's phone from our Disneyland trip. I've been in office technically 27 days. It was 34 days ago that they appointed me. I've been to three different council meetings. Our fourth one is this Tuesday. Please make sure you're looking at agenda items as they come forward. As much as I want to reach out to all of you, it actually is very helpful when you email me if you see a concern or you think that there's something we should be considerate of when we are making decisions. I really do appreciate that. We've done one goal setting session. And so what I brought to you today is an outline of those draft goals. I thought maybe you'd like to see some of the things that the city is going to be working on. And even the city council members, except for me, because I asked for it, have not seen these draft goals. So it's just between you and I and maybe 200 people at home. So just to know that those are brand new and we're still going to be meeting on them. And, and so there's time for you to weigh in on those goals as well. We've, I've done one newspaper interview. I've done a radio interview with KSRO and I don't know why this keeps doing this to me. But let's see if I. How's that? I've gone to a lot of different meetings and you can see this is my actual calendar. And those are actually all meetings that I will be in this month. So that has to do with me meeting with the planning commission, me meeting with people that have been involved in our community advisory board. So different commissioners that are appointed to be on representatives of the, of the council, on different boards that we serve on. And then also I've wanted to meet with different groups such as the fire department, making sure that I'm talking with Alan Alton, who is our CFO. I have some meetings set up to make sure that I have a deeper understanding of our, our budget. So here are our draft goals and I'm just going to go through them. If you want specifics on them, I have information on that. But it's to build and maintain sustainable infrastructure. Clearly that's an issue, whether it comes to water, whether it comes to sewers, making sure that we are doing our due diligence as far as roads and fire stations. And some of you know that they're rebuilding Fire Station Five, which is up in Fountain Grove right now. That just got approved and it should be breaking ground on that. And then we also have the Roseland Fire Department, that that's going to be built. And so we're moving forward on that infrastructure part of the city as well as a ton of other projects that we are working on, on any given day. Is it moving forward? Oh, wait. Sorry about this. Skip right over housing for all. And so housing for all is obviously a concern. I talked to you about the cost of housing. I talked to you about the need for housing. We know that when the Tubbs fire hit, we lost 3,300 homes, homes during that. And we're working on rebuilding, but making sure that we're being really smart about how we're building, looking our, looking at our urban growth boundaries and looking to see if we need to expand some of that annexation into the city, which is currently pretty tight, but looking at infill of housing so that we can still maintain the beauty of where we all live and reduce our homelessness issues. We know that a lot of these issues that create homelessness have to do with mental health. They have to do with veterans. They have to do with people who have substance abuse problems. And so looking to see what we could do to support our unhoused community, not only by creating shelter and the expansion of San Jones Hall with, which if you go down to Santa Rosa over by the mall, you could see that that expansion is happening and should create another 130 or so beds for folks that will help families on, in various need where there's children and mothers, whether it's our, a critical care unit, which is they're going to have a full care unit in that particular building. Excuse me. And then they're going to have some emergency services as well. And everything's on site, which is what we really appreciate. Some of you may have read about our in response team that's going out. And that data is showing some very, very positive results. And so I was able to meet with some of the in response team when they were actually out on a call looking for somebody who was in need of help. And I think looking at how we're delivering services and if we're doing it in a thoughtful way and we can have response from the proper people who are trained in how to work with people that maybe are having some mental health issues is a smart way for us to appropriate money for services in our community. So, and we already talked about ensuring a health, oh, did we talk about ensuring a health and safety community for all and promote economic and community vibrancy? So these are just a couple of the other goals that we've gone through and I'm happy to answer. Let's see, we talked about those too. Sorry about this. We're going to skip to fire. So one of the things I'm very familiar with is the, the need to address our fire and fire resiliency and what we're doing to maintain fire in our particular area. So the fire department met with me out here so I could see where Channel Drive was and where that connected through. We went through the concerns on how people can actually get out of the community. I want all of you to know that in 2020, my house almost burned down in Skyhawk. The fire ripped through right behind my house. The fire department had to break through my fences to get to that fire. It went up onto the hill and then burned down the houses on the ridge up in Skyhawk, if you were to drive by there. So my house is where the fire department was parked. We still had some neighbors. We sustained about $150,000 with the damage just on our own home. So I really do understand the panic of leaving. I understand what it's like to leave your home and not know if you're going to have one when you come back. I understand what it's like to be in a car with dogs while they're scrambling over you because they're panicked as well. And, and really, really relying on those who are in emergency response to get us out safely. So, so these are a few of the things we talked about was your exit routes. What are the chances of expanding, you know, through Anadale State Park? So that that is not just an emergency zone, but can people leave? They assured me, yes, if they're not bringing those vehicles in and it's safe for folks to leave out Anadale, they will use that as an exit. It's kind of a windy road. If you walked out Channel Drive, it's, it's not ideal, but they can use that as an exit route. We went over to Stone Bridge and actually Hugh Helm actually took me over there to show me some of those exit routes and, and potential for those. And then we've talked about what they're doing right now for prevention. So they just installed, or they're going to install, pardon me. We just approved a purchase, six of these remote automated weather stations, the ROS stations. Those are six stations that will go up, that will be able to tell and feed data to our fire department on where the weather is tracking. So if they're seeing that the wind is coming from the north or, and it's going to jump some other way, they'll be able to say, no, we can't put people over there to leave, but we need to put more fire stations. So it gives them that real time data almost down to the minute. So they know where to station our first responders and the fire trucks to protect all of us very well. And although 2020 was not a full success of no structures being burned, what we did was have is no loss of life, which is paramount for us. We had to make sure that that's first. But they did have data that came from NAPA and, and CAL FIRE that said the fire was going to be here in four hours or however the timeframe was. And so what they did was they exited all of us. And like you, I was stuck in that mess on Highway 12. And, and actually truthfully, I went out a different way, but I saw the mess on Highway 12 because several of my other community members from Skyhawk, they were stuck in it as well. So we talked about that and, and the reason they didn't open up the two ways going to the right on Highway 12 and the two ways going to the left on Highway 12 was because they knew they had enough time. But when you're in that situation, it feels uncomfortable when you see the glow over the hill and things coming at you. So I appreciate the panic and how that felt for all of you. But they assured me that they would open it two to the right and two to the left if needed. So, and I'll talk about Highway 12 a little bit as we, as I move on in this conversation around fire. But I really wanted to address it so that you know that I am trying to also gather data on what is happening around our, our fire and prevention so that all of you feel comfortable. They are working very closely with CAL FIRE, which you know that there's an area over here that's going in, which makes all of us feel a bit better. And they're working with Napa County as well. So an example is they just recently had a fire. It wasn't actually technically CAL FIRE's issue, but CAL FIRE immediately asked, how can we help? And our chief said, you can bring in overhead and they were there. So, so that is good, that that connection and that dovetail of response and those services are working together. So Highway 12, I just had a conversation with Senator McGuire on Friday. And Senator McGuire is used to me from my past experience as a state PTA president. We do a lot of advocacy work. And so like any other job that I've done, working on advocacy and, and reaching out to decision makers who have deeper pockets than even the city, I have no problem doing that. So I reminded him Highway 12 is actually his problem. So, but it actually impacts us. And what are we going to do to potentially widen that? So he, he did talk to me about that. We talked about the trees that are along there that are protected. We talked about maybe widening shoulders. And then of course, right now they're working on 101. The, the next big project is Highway 37. But I told them, we need to be in the queue. We need to look at Highway 12 again and we need to really reach out and do some, some more reports after the fires have hit now twice in this area. So that was something we brought up. And then he also told me about some of the allocations that state has currently made. So they made about a million dollars in allocations for vegetation management. And they're working right now in Anadale and they're working right over in Sugarloaf already. And Sugarloaf was appropriated in a different pocket of money, but those are two. And then Jack London State Park as well. He told me that in Sugarloaf and in Anadale Park, they've also put in two major breaks that were right next to housing. So that makes us feel a bit better that they're looking at that. But really looking at fire mitigation, making sure that we're doing vegetation management and that the state is taking care of our beautiful state parks so that it's safer for all of us. I told him is very much a concern. And so he is going to go back and look at the Anadale portion of that to see what they're doing so that he could actually speak to that as well and give me information. So I just got this from him on Friday. And then of course, looking at what else we're doing in fire management. Oh, sorry about that. That's me. That is not anyone else. Is going to be a consistent concern for all of us, making sure that we're working with the fire department, making sure that they're coming out here to explain when they're doing changes. And then of course, getting feedback from all of you. Did you have a question? Okay. And then of course, El Noca, which has been something of a concern for a lot of residents here. That was my second big thing to meet with some of the planning commissioners to see where is that project at? Has it already been approved? Has it, is it still in the works? Where, where is it at? So a lot of the concerns from the community went to the planning commission on the environmental impact report. And some of those they're looking at and seeing if they can address it. That is going to be coming to the planning commission this summer. So I would like to recommend that everyone give their concerns to the planning commission because then the planning commission has an opportunity to address some of those concerns before it even comes to city council. So if you haven't done that, please feel free to reach out to them. And then of course, when it comes to city council, make sure we're watching out for all of that. I'm happy to hear all the concerns and, and I have asked them to look at where the general plan was, which was in 2008 when that was approved. The environmental impact reports are based on that. Truly, I think that we need to update our general plan, which they're currently working on, should be done around the end of 2023. But that would update our environmental impact reports based on that current general plan. So that to me is, is quite important as far as making a decision based on something that is what quite frankly outdated. So, but staff is working on that. That's a major, major project to update a general plan. Some cities don't do it for 20 years. And so we, we need to get on top of that one and they, they really are. So people ask me, you know, why do I want to do this position? And in this picture, I just want to show you the three faces that are below my horrified one. It's their joy and it's being a part of something that when you do see success, that you feel like you've been, you've been able to be part of. And that's why I've done all the jobs I've done, whether it's a former school board trustee that was there during the worst fiscal crisis of schools in California and having to make cuts and then rebuild things. I like going into systems and making improvements and I love working with this community. And I'm highly committed to Santa Rosa and Sonoma County. And, and that's why I do it. There's not one particular thing that I'm saying, you know, we have to do this. One of the areas I clearly have a background in is education. And I'd like to see the city reach out more to our education partners, our early childhood education providers. And so that we are creating more conversations so that we're all on the same page. Because certainly when the pandemic hit and children and families were home and we didn't have bandwidth and we had parents trying to juggle work, we can see that there is an economic impact and we need to be working closer with our education partners in this community. And that's something that I definitely feel like I could bring to the council because it's something I'm very comfortable with. So, so that's why I do it. I left my contact information. Please take a photo of this and save it. My email is available. That is my city phone. You're always welcome to give me a call and I'll do my best to get back to you with any of your concerns. But please feel free to email me. I'm, I do my very best to respond quickly, but I can't give you 24 hour anymore. But I'll do my best to get back to you. And if you have an item on the agenda, please track that along with me. I'll, I'll do my best to get out here and, and speak to the leaders in the community so that I'm aware of concerns that you have. But please feel free, you know, as a constituent of, of mine to, to reach out. And that's, that's everything I have for you this morning.
Diana, thank you so much. That was excellent.
Thank you.
We will run questions between the auditorium and the Zoom group. If you're on Zoom, what you want to do is use the chat to enter your question and Judy Coleman will tell us that you're ready to talk. But since I have the mic, I'll ask the first question.
Great.
You are on something called the Commission on the Status of Women. Can you tell us what that is?
Sure. Well, that's a county appointment that I've had. The Commission on the Status of Women is a group of women that represents the different districts. So Supervisor Goran appointed, appointed me to that. I served on it under Supervisor Gore's appointment for the first time, then moved to this district about, well, five years ago now. And so Supervisor Goran, there was a position that worked, that opened up and she appointed it me to that particular commission. So we really focus on issues and concerns that have to do with women in our community. So it could be anything from housing insecurity. It could be anything related to health. A lot of times it has to do with domestic violence. It has to do with healthy partnerships with, in relationships. One of the things we've been able to go out and do prior to the pandemic was this whole entire process called the Women's Voices. So we went out to different parts of the community to have feedback from our members of the community on issues they had. And one of the issues that consistently came up was around childcare and lack thereof. So quality early care, zero to three childcare. And so that has become a focus of the commission. So you'll see that the commission, if you go back and look at just this last week, we are supporting the Our Kids, Our Future campaign. It's a tax initiative to help expand about $22 million for Sonoma County's littlest learners. And so that will create more opportunities for a higher wage for providers because typically our childcare providers who I think have one of the hardest jobs are the, some of the lowest paid folks in our community. So looking at addressing that, looking at addressing childhood trauma. So those are some of the things that the commission actually focuses on. And so we meet, I think the third Thursday or second Thursday of the month at six o'clock on Zoom right now. So everyone's welcome to attend. We always have speakers. This last week we had phenomenal speakers. My two folks are Victoria Fleming and Natalie Rogers, Esther Lemus. And another council member from Cloverdale came and talked about being an elected woman in office. So that was really wonderful to hear from all those, those great leaders. So, so feel free to join us and reach out in regards to that.
Okay. Iris Harrell has a question on Zoom. Iris?
Yes. Hi Diana, we're glad to have you here. I'm from, I'm out of town right now, but I wanted to ask you about the building department and the planning department. The people work very, very well at the city. They are smart. They are working hard, but they are really understaffed. And you know, we have a lot of grants coming in and we have state money surplus. We need to really have things, if we want the economy to be stimulated, we need building permits, planning commission stuff to go through, planning department faster because it slows down the economy. I think you probably understand that because you're with heating HVAC company. But this has been a problem since I've been here in 2016, but it's only gotten worse. You have any influence or comments on that?
Well, we're in the, we're going to be starting budget development. So that's one thing to think about is how we're appropriating money. But one of the things that they've seen and the reason that the city's been able to balance their budget is because we've had a lot of turnover of some of our staff. And some of it's just been people aren't necessarily resigning, they're retiring. So how are we addressing that? So one of the things we've noticed is, well, if people that are those young, new professionals can't afford to live here, how are we going to attract people to come and apply for the jobs when our folks are actually of retirement age? So some of it has been that, that we've had a lot of staff that have become retired, retirement, of retirement age. And so how do we address that? And I think it's really one of those multi-pronged approaches of housing, making sure we're offering wages that are comparative to other cities that are similar in size. And, and so some of those items are up. But what I did was I wrote that down so that I can get the numbers on how many people are actually in the planning department. I know they've really tried hard specifically after the fires to help the permit department speed things along. I agree that in the HVAC business, I can understand that the long time it can take to get permits. Personally, at least with my business, we've found the city to be very responsive and not having a long wait time. But if that is not your experience and what you have found to be so, then please reach out to me. The planning commission and that, they are phenomenal. And I'll give an example right now. We have an item on our agenda, 15.1 is the Hearn Veterans Village. And it's about 3,000 pages of attachments under this one item. It has public comments. There are maps. There have been notifications. There is the EIR reports, the environmental impact reports. And so looking at what that commission does and what our staff provides to the council before decision making, I have been highly impressed. And so I'm, I think a lot of their time actually goes to what they need to provide to us for decision making. But certainly I, I do hear your concern and I'm happy to, to at least ask questions. Even if I can't say, we'll definitely get more people in there. I think that there are some other things that we probably will have to work on. And I feel funny looking at you here, Iris, because I know you can see me there, but that's how I see you. So I apologize for the head turn.
It's, it's one of the challenges of this type of meeting.
Where do I go? Yeah.
Do we have a question in the audience?
Go here, please. Thank you. Thank you for coming to Oakmont. Give us important information. I'm Norma Baumsteiger. I'm the chairperson of the Slow Down Oakmont Committee. And this is a committee that was established more than three years ago because of the speeding that goes nonstop on Oakmont Drive. Very dangerous speeding. And we had a little committee formed three and a half years ago. We called the OVA people here and told them that there was a problem with the speeding. And unfortunately I was very rudely told, go to the city. We have nothing to do with the speeding on Oakmont. It all belongs to the city. So we went to the city. Then we went to the police department when we found out that Oakmont Drive belongs to the city. Unexpectedly, we went down to the police department three and a half years ago on a Saturday morning. We sat down in the lobby until one of the ladies there came and asked us, do we have a problem? There were four of us there that morning. Yes, we have a big problem in Oakmont. It's the constant speeding and violation of the 25 mile an hour speed zone. So the police then said, come up to our office. We'll see what you have to say and we'll see what we can do about it.
Excuse me. Could you get on to a question?
Pardon me?
Do you have a question for?
Yes, I have a question to the city council, to the OVA Board of Directors, to the police department and to the city engineer, why nothing is being done about the speeding in Oakmont. And we have formed our committee now and we will not go back to the three and a half years when nothing has been done. And our, our committee now is moving ahead to get the speeding corrected on Oakmont Drive. And I hope you can help us. We're not on your agenda. We're not anybody's agenda, but we live here and we want the problem corrected.
I appreciate that. And certainly it's a safety issue when people are speeding. And, and as much as I want to enforce everything and be in control, that I do need partnership with our police department. But I do appreciate what you said. And, and one of the other areas that I recently went out and took a look at was Pittian Road and where there's a crosswalk there. And I could And I could very visibly see people were speeding going over that 35 miles an hour, which is posted right now. And so some of the things that they do is, I asked them, well, can you put those little dots? You know, they're called bot dots, which I just learned a couple of days ago, on the road so that people are alert? Because people do tend to look at their phones. They're not watching what's out in front of them, and so that's a concern. So I know that Rob Sprinkle has been part of the city coming out here. They're looking at making sure that things are taken a look at. But I wrote him a note about the Pittian Road, which they did a study several years ago, or even in November. And I said, please take another look at that. So I am happy to go back and talk about Oakmont Drive and ask them, what are they doing to address it? And I'm not sure if that has to do with, do we need, you know? They don't want speed bumps. I know that from the fire department because it causes issues when their trucks come in and out. So that's not going to be a popular one. If we put the bot dots, then it could be a nuisance because they're constantly making noise. So they're weighing out the impact of your environment that you live in when you live along that road, and then also the safety of others. And unfortunately, a lot of what we use on safety is have there been incidents? And so we, we don't, we want to be preventative of incidents. So I appreciate that, but, but that is what they look at. So I'm not saying that they've done it all. I'm just saying, let's look at it again. And I'm happy, and I wrote down Oakmont Drive. And I will reach back out to Jason Nutt, who oversees the Transportation Department, and Rob Sprinkle to ask them what they're doing in regards to that. I don't have direct access to the police department. At least I don't think I do. But I'm happy to always address things with our city manager so that they're aware this is a real concern. And if you have anything for me on that, I'm happy to take that and read through it as well.
Diana, if you're making notes, would you note that the particular intersection of Oakmont Drive and White Oak, which is the one right out here, is a major problem because we have people with walkers and wheelchairs that cross a very busy intersection? We have a question on Zoom.
You've been very, can you hear me? Yeah, you've been very active in education. Can you tell me what your thoughts are on banning books and teaching CRT?
Sure. I mean, that's not going to be a city council purview, but
Understood.
I'm happy to tell you my personal opinion on it. And so, you know, certainly we need to look at what's being taught in our schools. And I think that banning books is, is a terrible thing to be doing right now, to be perfectly honest. I think that parent engagement and making sure that our families know what's being taught and the purposes of why they're being taught is very important. But I am not for banning books personally. And if we're looking at critical race theory and making sure that CRT is taught in our schools, what we really want to make sure is that what is being taught is accurate to the history and things, how they have happened. If we look at some of the books that, in the history that has been taught, it has been what we considered whitewashed so that it is more comfortable for us to hear. There is not an accurate, pardon me, accurate depiction of what really happened with slavery or internment camps that we had even in California. And so I think addressing that in education to make sure that we are really being thoughtful and not dismissive of the true things that have happened in our history is important. Because if we do not learn from history and what has happened, then how in the world will we prevent it from happening again? And I think you can see that with what's happening right now in the war. That's happening in the Ukraine with the horrific attack on human beings and children and families over there right now. So I, I truly believe that making sure that we are using proper history and depictions of what truly happened is the only way we'll be able to make positive progression forward.
Diana, could you speak for a moment about water?
Yes. So that's my third area that I've got to get to. So they put me on the Board of Public Utilities as a liaison. And some of the things that they addressed, and that is around water and infrastructure and drought. And so it's on my list to go meet with Jennifer Burke, who is our director in charge of water for the city. I want to go out and do a tour to make sure that we know. But we are going to have to look at infrastructure. We can do a lot around drought-resistant plants. We could do a lot around making sure that the community is educated on what to do around water. But we're, we're going to have to look at a few other things, similar to maybe what, what LA is doing around making sure that we're using, reusing water in a thoughtful way. Can we re, have reused water, you know, potable water, go out and irrigate some of our farms and our agriculture industry instead of using that fresh water that we need to drink? So in the past, they maybe weren't as open to that. But I think after years and years of drought, we need to reopen that discussion. And there's a lot that can probably be done around that. And so that's about what I know at a, at a fairly high level, not a deep level around the need for water. But let's be honest, if we don't have water, we are not going to have life. It has to be addressed. It's got to be an infrastructure issue. We have to do an education issue. And then we need to be thoughtful about when we are building more. Do we have the resources to be able to give water to those new households? I would also say that there's several people living in a household. So I'm one of those as well. My kids are living with us, so we consume water for five people. If they moved into their own place, it would still be the same amount of water. I just won't be paying for it anymore. So, so that, looking at those numbers as well as how many multifamilies you have in one home? And would we just create an opportunity for them to have a house on their own?
Diana, we have another question here.
Great.
Hi. It's great to hear you. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, what kind of coordination is there between the council that you're part of in Santa Rosa and the people who are working on the SDC and the thinking through of that? Because there we've got, you know, people who want a big population plunked over there. And then we've got Elnoca or whatever it is over there. And all, altogether, that's a huge new population that would have to have water and exit and all sorts of things. Are the, are you two communicating with each other when that environmental, you know, planning thing is, is done?
Thank you for the question. So I do know Supervisor Goran well, and I have a call with her next week. And some of the questions I am going to be asking is around water and actually Highway 12. Because if we add more people into the Sonoma project, then how is that going to impact Highway 12 in our community? And is that discussion happening? I mentioned it specifically to Mike McGuire around adding more folks there. And then, of course, Elnoca hasn't happened yet, but we know that it's been there for about 20-plus years, I understand. So, it's not going to happen. So, well, I mean, and that is a great advocacy work. So let's make sure that everybody is giving us as much data as we possibly can on both those projects, but looking at the environmental impact of that. So I, I definitely would recommend, I'm happy to reach out to Supervisor Goran, but I would really recommend having her come here and address the concerns around that because she's, she's proficient in it, because she's working on it every single day. So while I can definitely get information for you, she's the expert and she knows it. And then let's remember, she also has that environmental lens. So she is very thoughtful around what we're building out there. She's extremely knowledgeable around water and environmental impact reports. And so I really look to her leadership to learn from and connect with. And like I said, I have no problem going to her. I have no problem going to our decision-makers. I mean, I'm an advocate. Doesn't matter if it's for kids and if it's for families or it's for our city. I will be happy to do that on behalf of all of us. So, but I would, I would recommend, let's reaching out to her. I haven't seen the final projects. It's about 1,300 acres that they're developing out there. It's going to be a mixture of some housing, the parks, and so that we're really making sure that it's accessible for, for folks. But it will create traffic. It will definitely create some, some concerns. But I can't say how they're addressing water. I, I really don't know that.
Diana, we have another question here.
I do. Thank you for being here, Diana. It's a pleasure to meet you and I'm proud to have you represent us.
Thank you.
My ears really picked up when you talked about the possibility. You said you had talked to Senator McGuire about the possibility of doing something to widen Highway 12. This is probably a question more directed toward Mike. But let me ask, have you heard? I mean, for so long, we've heard that nothing can be done about 12 because it's designated a scenic highway.
Sure.
But have you heard that anything can be done to widen it? To do something to improve the egress out of Oakmont? It's scary here.
I totally appreciate that and, and thank you for the question on that. So there are things we could do to widen it. It is designated a scenic route because we have those beautiful oak trees on the sides. But we do, I think, need to look at how things have fared. After the fires, PG&E had an opportunity to take down all the oak trees because they actually sit right on top of a power line that runs right underneath them. So it, it actually can cause problems with the infrastructure from PG&E. But they had such a massive outcry from the community to remove those trees. And let's face it, they weren't super popular at the time. They decided to back away from the removal of those trees. So I think what we'll need to do is some, some conversations with our environmental friends so that we're aware of what, what is being done. Certainly, I would say, we've got to do this and we've got to open it up. But I need to learn more about the impacts of the environment. Is it aesthetic? Is it because it's so beautiful? That's a different conversation and issue to address. I deal with it a lot in, in the business I'm in. I'll use a winery as an example. They want everything to be very beautiful. But when it comes to the infrastructure, such as heating and air conditioning, they don't ever want to really invest the money in that because it's not popular and it doesn't result necessarily in seeing anything. But what it will do is it will save the wine. So we must be thoughtful about that. So, so it needs to be looked at. I did get it into the city goals that Highway 12 is looked at. And that we come back and look at it. But this is a long-term issue that we have on Highway 12. It's not going to be fixed instantly. And we're going to have to keep pushing for that because it is a real problem. And I think we can definitely say that after seeing the two, two fires that we have. The fire department's aware of it. Mike McGuire is aware of it. I, I know that Supervisor Goran is aware of it. But being aware of it and then looking at maybe some long-term planning and what we need to do, but still being thoughtful about the beautiful environment that surrounds us and not doing something that could be damaging to the environment in any way would be something that we'd need to, to look into. But I can't tell you I could get the Highway 12 widened. I've only been on the job 27 days. But, but it's on my list and it's because it is a safety issue, in my opinion. And so, so we'll keep working on it and, and don't let up. And they know, everyone who knows me knows I won't let up, but it may not still result in the actions we want to see. But it doesn't mean that I'm not going to keep bringing it up.
There was a question Gabriel had, I think, at the front.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for all the hard work you're doing for us. My, my question is a bit of a follow-up on the planning commission one. We've been trying to build a, an ADU attached under our deck. And the, the staffing shortages and people getting ill have in fact delayed us, I think, for about four months. Now we're doing fine. We're on track. And we've got good relationship. And, and I'm amazed at how people are coming to do inspections about once or twice a week for each stage of the construction. But I wonder if you have any formal mechanisms to survey competent contractors and technical people as to what they think might be ways to, not only to, to simplify the process. We have huge, massive 22-foot steel beams just for a little 485-foot thing that we had to, to put in. And I think some, some of the regulations, maybe some of the really competent contractors and technical people could provide suggestions as to what might make it easier for us to get to more affordable housing. And I also was wondering what mechanism you recommend for people to try and provide feedback to you?
Sure. So I think, I'll start with that one. That one's much easier to address. I'll start with, go ahead and email me. It's probably the best way to get to me. Just because I tend to be in a lot of meetings and so phone calls, you're going to get forward to voicemail. So feel free to email me. I don't, I have a system. If it's in my email inbox, it's because it's not, it hasn't been addressed or taken care of or I haven't gotten back to you. Once I feel that there's a response, I'll file it. So I have a system to keep track of my multiple email accounts for PTA, the National PTA for our business, and then, of course, now for city council. So feel free to email me. As far as construction and the permit process, I will tell you just my own experience was time-consuming. And it had to do with building a deck. And so going down to the permit department, making sure that our, our contractor knew what the parameters of that was, what we had to do to brace that particular deck and then working with the city. It, it took months and months and months. So I agree that that's a problem. In between all of that, you can see an increase in construction cost has been significant. I know just from our industry, things have gone up anywhere from 10% to 20%. And that's just on our end. So that then gets pushed off onto you the longer we push out projects. I would have to know the specifics and what the delay was. As far as screening contractors and looking at what the city does, it's, a lot of it has to do with safety. You know, if they permit you and they aren't going through those steel beams, then what is the liability, I think, of the city? So making sure that they're thoughtful around that. But I can't, I don't know enough about how they're constructing things or the purpose and why they're doing it a certain way. So I would have to get more information on that. Or you're welcome to email me the specifics of, of a, a project or a job. And then I can always check in on it just to see where they're at or what maybe we're doing. Is it bureaucratic red tape that, you know, now it's got to go to this person, this person? I can tell you during the pandemic, we did have a lot of delays in, in just how we were working, right? A lot of these projects, specifically the general plan, is something that takes being able to do teamwork and meet together and work together. And as efficient as Zoom can be, it is different than actually creating those relationships and getting to know people. So while everyone's able to view things and be involved, it's still different than me getting to meet with all of you personally. And so that's something I know even in business has delayed things from getting completed. And then it's a little like herding cats, right? If you're not there and you're not able to kind of oversee everything, then what's being done? And that's harder to do, I think, remotely. That said, I will tell you that our, our department, our assistant manager, Claire Hartman, that oversees all the economic development and planning department is phenomenal. The staff that work with her is phenomenal, but they are a tiny, tiny department, which was addressed earlier. So let, let's look at, at that because we certainly don't want people delayed in doing their projects. That's not a goal of ours. And I, and I hope I heard you okay, if that was your question. Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't even know how to do that. Like, how do we get all the contractors together to make recommendations on that? Do a survey. That's an interesting thought. Can you email me that? All right. Great.
We have one more question.
Diana, thanks for coming.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Ed Biglin. I'm also a leader of the Oakmont Progressive Club and with the Dems. I read in the PD a couple of months ago that the city and county in the last five years have paid out about $20 million in settlements around sheriff and police excessive use of force. in settlements around sheriff and police excessive use of force. Can you talk a little bit about what might be done locally? Obviously, it's a big problem nationally. But how can the council provide some leadership on that locally?
Sure, well, I know that that's been a real issue, you know, in our community, but really more, we see it across the United States on policing and their processes. So some of the things that we've started to do is looking at the in-response team, is who's responding to the event that's occurring? So if you have somebody that doesn't have that professional development and background on how to interact with somebody who's in distress or having a mental health crisis, is it the proper person? So looking at the shift in, one, what are we doing, frankly, to address these concerns and those calls? And then looking at, from my perspective, it's like any other profession. When somebody is in need of support and help, it's probably because they have to have some professional development or we need to shift how we're doing things. Certainly, the police department, looking at their policies and their processes and how they're training folks, is going to need to be addressed. I think there's, you know, some things that we can do. I know they have an independent auditor right now that works alongside with the chief. I just talked briefly to Chief Navarro when we were at goal setting and asked him how that worked. And so they do have somebody that comes in right now to make sure they're following a healthy process. But really, what we need to do is instill that trust into our community so that they feel safe, no matter what section of the city that we live in, no matter what section of Sonoma County we're from, and certainly, no matter what their ethnic background is, that they feel confident that when our police department is coming to their need or their service or they are being pulled over, that they will be treated the same way. So I can tell you, it is, the county, or pardon me, the city has done a lot of work around diversity, equity, and inclusion, unconscious biasness, and making sure that we're really addressing these concerns because they're there. And I think, just like teaching and education, what we did 20, 30 years ago is not what we have to do now. And so looking at that from a professional lens of, you know, maybe what we were doing in policing 20, 30 years ago and how we were supporting our law enforcement officers needs to be shifted and looked at again so that we really are responsive to the changing in our community and that practices and policies and certain behaviors will not be tolerated. And so, you know, as Chief Navarro retires, I think those are some of the questions that City Council will be asking of a new police chief. And certainly, you know, any feedback from the community on ideas or concerns that they have around that, I would welcome. I do, you know, want to say I have the utmost respect to those who serve our community, whether it's in law enforcement or first responders or fire department, because they are what keeps us safe. But we, it's not to say that they maybe don't need some more support in another way to make sure that we are feeling confident with their service to us.
Diana, I think we have one more question on Zoom.
Sure.
I would like the questioner to keep it short. We're reaching the end of our day. Okay, I guess that question has gone away. Okay. Do we have a hand up? Well, yes. Herb, if you are going to ask a quick question, it's your turn.
Yeah, 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 thanks for coming today for this meeting. I want to come back to this discussion about emergency exit roads. And looking at the map, it looks like technically it should be possible to construct something that connects Oakmont to Loundeal. Loundeal, kind of, it's private property, but probably it would be much, much cheaper than widening Highway 12. And it would avoid Highway 12 exit. And sure, it should be only for emergency, not as a permanent connection. Is this being considered?
So does the Loundeal, I have, I am very, I'm dyslexic. So maps have a hard time with me. I have to go physically see where you're discussing. So is Loundeal where El Noca would then connect? So then, does that actually? It runs into Kenwood. And so we would have to do a connection out to Kenwood. Does it go through Anadell Park, that exit? Just below Anadell Park? But there's no connecting road out that way?
No, actually, this is an existing Loundeal road. It goes from Highway 12. It goes to
If I can clarify, Loundeal is about a half a mile on Route 12 to the east of the Pittian Road exit from Oakmont.
Okay.
So there's about a half a mile of Route 12. Then it connects to Loundeal, which is a, basically, a lane and a half wide winding road that eventually connects to Bennett Valley.
Okay. I think I know what you're talking about. But there's no connection from this community out to Loundeal Road. You have to go out Pittian to 12 and then you could get to Loundeal. Is that, am I doing the map right? Okay. All right. The short answer is no. I haven't heard any discussion around connecting here to Loundeal. And so that would be something that we'd have. And to your point, if it's a lot cheaper and easier, that might be a smart move for us to look at how we could connect to Loundeal so that you can then get out to Bennett Valley Road and then exit that way as opposed to having you go out Pittian and then bottlenecking Highway 12. So I will talk to the fire department. I'm going to write that down, Loundeal Road. And thank you for walking me through the map. I appreciate that and apologize that my map skills are poor. Loundeal Road connection.
Diana, I'll assure you that most Oakmotters have very weird ideas about how the maps work here.
Well, I appreciate that. And even though I've walked through Oakmont several times and all through your properties, there's lots of little courts and there's lots of little areas. So it can get confusing. And so I could see even in an emergency how that could be really problematic. And I have talked to the fire department around that and happy to connect with the police department around making sure that there's resources here to direct people the right way. So one of the things that they did talk about was rerouting folks out a different way. In the last fire, everybody went out Highway 12. They recognized that. It was not maybe a popular decision to go the other way. And they knew that everyone could exit safely. So they assured me that they knew that. However, the people that were stuck in the traffic, that is a difference. I prefer to be at a slow pace moving somewhere than to be stuck. That feels very uncomfortable. So talking to them, I did address that. Like, if you have people that can't even move at a snail's pace, but they're moving, that feels better because you feel like you're making progress. So I will tell you that two of the exit areas, the reason they didn't route anyone on there was because the fire actually went over those two areas. So I really do trust our fire department to make the best decisions for all of our safety. And they do have data that sometimes we are not aware of as citizens and as much as we could do on NICSOL alerts, which I will recommend that everybody sign up for those so that you're informed on your phones. We still could do better. And so we just need to keep working on it.
Diana, we're going to wrap up now. I will, on your behalf, mention that Diana is finishing an appointment year. She will come up for reelection, assuming she still has an interest in it in November. And then that will finish a one-year term. And she'll come up again in 2023. But so far, Diana, are you sounding, thinking your game to do it?
Well, so I'll clarify. This appointment was to the next election. And the next election would keep me there for two years. And then it would be a 2024 election. So I had indicated that if I had received the appointment that I would more than likely be interested in running for the election. I haven't made any formal, you know, announcements. And some of the reason around that is, one, I want to get out and meet with folks like you to make sure that, one, I can be knowledgeable in the topics that are concerning to our community. And more than anything, I could be effective as an advocate in the role. Because, and maybe it's because my grandmother was a special education teacher and I've been in education. I like getting an A+ and a gold star on anything I do. And if I'm not effective and I'm not having fun and effective at the same time, then I'm probably not going to want to do the job because somebody else who maybe could do better should do it. I, like I said, I'm pretty tenacious. And so I don't like to give up. And I really feel committed to this current city council on working on the problems that we see in our community. I'm going to be part of budget development and goal settings. Like, so there's a good chance you're going to see my name on a ballot.
Thank you so much. That will wrap up our meeting for today. Next week, T. T, T-E-A, T.